I do want to say we're going to be talking off of notes from a PowerPoint presentation. My understanding is viewers at home will not be able to see the PowerPoint presentation in real time, but for those of you who are viewing this in a recorded, a recorded fashion, it should be available in, the link should be available in the description down below. I'd like to, just some opening comments before we get into the details of, of the status of, of the COVID update. Right now, we are in a historic situation. This is an unprecedented public health emergency that we haven't seen in generations. You know, at this point, in the Kent County community, the response by our public organizations, by our private nonprofits, by our leadership has been outstanding. I have gotten cooperation and enthusiasm from everybody that I've enlisted assistance with. The, the response has truly been outstanding. The, the other thing I'd like to mention is the virus that is the COVID-19 disease is here in Kent County. It is now considered at the phase of being community spread. It is, it is here among us and we ask that, that everybody use social distancing, stay at home, and follow the governor's executive order yesterday to stay home and limit, limit your exposure out in the community as much as possible. Please, treat all of those you come into contact with as potential carriers. That doesn't mean panic. Please do not panic. Use social distancing, wash your hands, cover your cough, use all of the advice that has been, that has been espoused by the Health Department and, and our media outlets routinely. So, I'm going to go ahead and get into the PowerPoint update. The first thing I want to talk about really are the Health Department activities that we have been involved with to address this situation. First and foremost, there is the testing issue. Testing has been a very difficult task at this point because the test kits are in short supply. They're in short supply in the county, in the state, in the nation, and across the globe. We're working with our commercial suppliers, we're working with emergency management suppliers to get as much testing material as we possibly can. The strategy that the Health Department in Kent County has used is to team up with the five other regional, local health departments and offer drive-up testing at the Chesapeake College location in Wy Mills. And, and since that started, you know, a week and a half ago, we have, we've had just under 130 total residents of the five mid-shore counties tested for Kent County. We have had, we've had 23 people go through that and be tested. And, it's important to note that the testing kits are in such short supply that had we not partnered with the other counties, we would have only been able to do 11 tests. So, you know, the fact that we have been able to test twice as many people as we would have without the partnership is a testament to the collaboration and cooperation we've have gotten from the other counties. That being said, new labs and alternate testing technology is, is coming online every day. The State of Maryland, Maryland Department of Health, the Labs Administration, and the FDA are working vigorously to increase capacity and advance the technology that we have to something that, that we can get a faster turnaround and we can get a turnaround at the point of care. Okay. The other important thing I want to mention about, about testing. The Health Department, ever since, ever since testing was, became available on the commercial market and didn't have to go through the MDH labs, we have not been able to track the number of pending tests that are out there. It's just impossible. Imagine the situation where we have a Kent County resident who happens to be in Vermont who's tested. We would have no way of knowing that. Same thing if we have a resident who goes and gets tested at Frederick General Hospital. We, we can't, we can't, we can't track the number. It's very difficult that, the, tracking the number of pending tests is not something that's feasible at this point. But what is, is we're getting those test results, we're, you know, all the labs by law are obligated to report test results to the Health Department that, that, you know, we do, we do track the results that we have received. And, at this point...
Mr. Webb, before I forget the, the question, how long does it take for you to get those results nowadays?
So, so that, that depends. One of the things that was implemented when the need was ramped up, to answer your question, between two and 13 days depending on the priority of the situation. The, right now, the, the state has implemented a prioritization process for processing lab samples dependent upon the clinical situation. So, folks who are in the hospital who have, you know, who need to know whether or not they're positive, those are getting processed first, they're getting processed the fastest. The other, the other results that are coming through commercial labs, you know, vary depending on what the provider indicates as their priority.
I do.
Okay. Okay. So far, in Kent County, we've had three positive cases. That, that number, just to be clear, is not, it significantly under-represents the severity of the situation in our county. That, the number is low and it is an artifact of the low testing volume that we have been able to accomplish. The, the, you know, I believe that the virus is here in the community, it is, it is being transmitted at a rate significantly higher than the test results would suggest. So, please, you know, please use caution. Current updates on, on our individual cases, when we get a positive, we investigate all positive cases. We're going to do, you know, a contact tracing for all of our positive cases, which means that we, we reach out to the individual who tested positive, that we're, we're getting a list of everybody that they have been in close personal contact with, and then we contact those individuals. That is, that is an important part of it, the contact tracing. We're also focused on any law enforcement, EMS, or voluntary first responders who may have come in contact with those individuals. That is, that's also an important component of the contact tracing. One of the, so the, I'll just do a quick rundown on all three cases that we have, we've gotten. At this point, we have done contact tracings on all of them, and we have contacted each one of their close, you know, close interactions, and we have not been notified that any of those folks at this point are showing symptoms. The other thing that we're interested in doing when we do the contact tracing is whether or not the individual has exposed a large group of high-risk individuals who, who could be susceptible to the disease. Because those, those situations are our highest priorities. As you know, in Carroll County, there was a long-term care facility that, that the virus got into, and they had, you know, they had 66 residents who tested positive in, in a matter of a day and a half. And so, those, the, those particular situations are, are, you know, we're very aware of and we're trying to prevent those if at all possible. We, we did have, you know, one case where it was a Washington college student who, who had, who attended a barbecue outside on the 13th, and we have contacted 48 people who, who were at the party. All of those were advised to quarantine, and from that investigation, we didn't find anybody else who was symptomatic from interactions at the party. The first case that we have is, is currently, is, is the, as the individual has recovered and we're considering that one inactive, we still have two additional cases that we're monitoring and expect them, if, if they recover fully and their symptoms diminish, that they should be designated inactive in the first week and a half of April.
So, you're saying that the three that you've talked about, the one person that was always questionable at the college is one of those three?
No.
Not one of them?
No, no, there was, there was, there was an individual who was hospitalized, who was hospitalized, who was a student, that, that he tested negative. There was another student who had returned from international travel, who did subsequently test positively, and we had, you know, the individual was from out of state, and we were notified by the college that the person had been at a party on Friday the 13th, and so we reached out to all of the attendees who were at the party to make sure that they quarantine and they report any symptoms to, either to us or to their local Health Department, wherever they may live.
The initial student commissioner from two Fridays ago, the initial student, tested negative. The one we waited so long for the test, tested negative.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, one of the things moving forward, you know, from a public health perspective, we're, we're actively in the mitigation surge phase of this outbreak. Moving forward in terms of individual announcements about positive cases, we're going to, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to issue press releases about that. We will increment our, you know, our count that we're going to put on the website and to let, and we're still going to do the contact tracings. You know, the spending, you know, is, is, at this point, we're, we're rapidly focused on how the Health Department can respond to the surge in the healthcare community. We're, we're, you know, we're more than happy to, you know, to work with the Maryland Department of Health and the Emergency Operations Center to let everyone know that we have another case in terms of disclosing, you know, the age and, you know, the detail. That's, that's, that is, you know, that's something that, that spending more time to do is going to be, you know, is, is not a good use of resources. Other Health Department activities, on the, on the 24th, we stood up, we stood up a hotline at the Health Department to answer questions. It's available from 8:30 to 6:00 every day, and that is for the general public to call if you have questions about, about the disease, about your specific situation, if you need guidance. At this point, we have fielded just under 100 calls. The phone number is 410-778-1350. The next activity that the Health Department's been involved with is, is receiving supplies from the Strategic National Stockpile. This is the federal cache of healthcare supplies that, that, that is distributed to all jurisdictions in the state specifically to meet this pandemic situation. At this point, we have received two shipments, one on the, one on 20th and one on the 27th, and it involved about 33 cases of supplies. We have distributed on the 20th to, to healthcare organizations that are designated as a high priority, to, you know, for those supplies. We are, we are actively working on the second shipment to distribute those. The, the prioritization of the supplies is determined by the Maryland Emergency Management Administration, and it is, you know, and it is handed out by the Health Department. At this point, the supplies that we have gotten and we're able to get are, are a small fraction of what's needed. Personal protective equipment is in short supply across the country. Healthcare organizations are actively working to conserve the, conserve the supply that they have and also, and also, you know, maximize the efficiency of their staff in interacting with potential individuals who are sick.
This seems true for EMS. We've received our second shipment yesterday, but it's pretty small. We're good for another two, three weeks, but we're still looking for more equipment to handle.
In terms of, you know, working with the Chester River Hospital, the Chester River Hospital is a vital partner in the emergency response. They, they are members of the Emergency Operations Center. They report every day to us about what their operating capacity is. In, you know, in the last 10 days, they have been mostly operating within their licensed capacity. Yesterday, they had, which is, they had 15 licensed beds. Yesterday, they had 16 admitted patients. One of the things that they have done to greatly help the situation is postponing all elective procedures and, and anything that is not absolutely urgent. From an EMS perspective, the statewide, the, the number of EMS calls is down, but the calls for influenza-like illness symptoms are up. In relation to, so at this point, we're, you know, the, the emphasis of the Health Department and of the, the hospital surge plan. We met yesterday with the CEO, Ken Cozell, of Shore Regional Health. Their plan is to, you know, is to double the number of hospital beds and quadruple the number of ICU beds with, with equipment across the, across the Shore Regional Health system. In Kent County, they are looking specifically to go from 15 to 26 beds. Right now, they have two ICU beds and they're looking to go to four. The biggest challenge that, well, that they also, Shore Regional Health has also set up triage tents outside of the building. What their, what their goal is when, when people start coming in is to evaluate and assess the severity of the situation, and many patients, when they come in, they can be treated with fluids and with, you know, with some, with, with some, some treatment such as supplemental oxygen that will allow them to go home and potentially recover without needing hospitalization. They're, they're, they have tested the triage tents, they have drilled in Easton with their staff, and they're, they have been actively working to increase the number of beds. They have the space. The critical issue at this point is staffing, equipment, and supplies. So, you know, the Health Department and, and all of our local organizations are encouraging people through Maryland Response, if you're a healthcare provider who's not actively engaged in working with, you know, with the healthcare organization, that that is an opportunity to volunteer and to help your community. At this point, the Kent County Health Department has processed applications for 16 volunteers who are willing to pitch in. At this point, I am, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to go right to sort of some of our frequently asked questions so that you can, you can, you know, I think this is... So, the first question that I get frequently is, when do I anticipate this being over? No one really knows with any certainty. You know, all, the, the reports and the models that I have seen vary widely enough so that I'm not confident about, you know, publicly making a prediction, but I can say that, that we're asking everybody to anticipate it to go on longer than expected. What should I do if I've been exposed? If you've been in close contact with someone who is symptomatic, please quarantine yourself for 14 days, monitor your temperature and other symptoms. If you're at high risk, that means you're over the age of 60, or you have pre-existing medical conditions, please get into contact with your healthcare provider as soon as possible. What should I do if I feel sick? If you're symptomatic, please contact your healthcare provider, quarantine at home for at least seven days or until you're 72 hours symptom-free without medication. If I've been sick, when can I leave quarantine or isolation? The recommendation at this point is please isolate for seven days minimum, and then after seven days, you need to be 72 hours symptom-free without medication.
So, we're doing that with EMS also. If we get a call that is screened by the Model 1 Center, it's possible a person in an investigation for COVID-19. If we get there and the person can manage their symptoms and they're not in one of the high-risk categories, we might ask them to stay there rather than to be transported and go to the hospital. But we'll make sure first of all that they're not in the high-risk categories and that they feel like they can manage their symptoms at that time. If not, then we'll certainly be transported if we have to.
Okay. The, thank you, Wayne. The next question is, involves, you know, why is the Health Department not disclosing more information about positive cases? So, you know, we've gotten calls about, you know, I want to know if the positive case was at the supermarket, was out at the community center, was at the post office. Those types of reports are, are, you know, one, it potentially stigmatizes wherever the, the business or the location where they work, and second of all, that type of information is, is effective when you're trying to do a containment strategy for an infectious disease. Containment is the process of, let's, let's make sure everybody knows where it was so that we can keep it in that particular location. Given the nature of this particular virus and the community spread that we know is in place and is existing, the containment strategy is no longer part of, part of the public health response that we're trying to do. And, and I understand that, that, you know, that folks need that, want that information, but at this point, you know, one, it could stigmatize those, those places that we identify, and it could also give folks a false sense of security that if that, if some place is not listed, then it is safe to go there. And what we know about this virus is it's here, it's in the community, and it is spreading. So, please, treat everyone that you encounter as a potential carrier. Okay, so, next question. I'm running on low on food. Where can I get a meal? So, you know, please call, you know, 211. The MSDU webpage has lots of resources related to that, or the Health Department webpage. At this point, I do want to get a plug in for all of the work that the, that the Kent County Board of Education has done to deliver meals. The, you know, just today, our Lions Club has delivered, I don't know how many thousands of pounds of food...
15,000 or 15 tons? 15 tons I think they had delivered.
15 tons today. And that's food donations, and that's, you know, that's just reflective of, you know, the community spirit that we have in Kent County and, you know, the work that everyone is doing to take care of, you know, our fellow citizens and our neighbors.
And Bill locally, for a local number, 410-778-7600 is the Department of Social Services, and their director, Shelly Neal Edwards, has, has helped us three or four times already this past couple of weeks in giving meals for people who are scared. Most of them have been elderly and scared and afraid to come out of their house, so she okay for me to give that number out, it's 410-778-7600 for the Health Department, I'm sorry, the Social Services line. You will probably get a recording, but they check it many times during the day and somebody will respond back to it, and they'll either help you out or point you in the right direction for food.
Okay. The next question is, you know, many people are coming to Kent County from other states. What can we do about that? You know, we're encouraging everybody who, you know, you know, the answer that I have listed on the spreadsheet was prior to the governor's, you know, you know, shelter in place order, but we're encouraging anybody who, who is coming from out of state, please self-quarantine for 14 days and bring your supply of food with you so that you don't have to, you know, shop locally.
That includes Maryland residents who have left for a period and are coming back also.
Okay. The, the next question is, should I wear face masks when I go out in public? No, no, face masks are not recommended for the general public, though face masks for those who are symptomatic in some settings such as a hospital to prevent the spread of the disease. So, face masks are effective for, for folks who are feeling the symptoms of respiratory cough, fever, or shortness of breath to help contain the spread of the virus. That, you know, face masks, you know, general surgical face masks are not, are not effective for preventing the spread of, spread of disease at this point. I would like to, you know, get a plug in for all of our volunteers at this point. The Health Department has received approximately 300 hand-sewn face masks from, from a group at Summer Hall, and, and they have, you know, been working with the Health Department to get those things made, and we're going to get them out to the community. Their volunteer effort has been absolutely spectacular, so, thank you. The homeless population. What is being done about people who are homeless and who may be potentially...
So, we've, we've put together a little task force of Health Department, Social Services in our office, and we're working on that question now. I think from what I see from other areas of the state, we're way ahead. We don't have as many locations as, as say you would have on the western shore with hotels and things like that, but it's being worked on and we'll have that solved here in the next week or so. We're looking at some, some sites that will, will be able to house homeless populations should it become affected by the disease.
Okay. We, we have also got the question about, about elder care for people who are in, who are in institutions. How do we know that they're getting the appropriate level of care? At this point, what, what, you know, we, the local Health Department is, does not have jurisdiction over institutions such as nursing homes or assisted living. That is the, that is the domain of the Office of Healthcare Quality. At this point, we have not received any specific complaints from individuals about, you know, about problems in our facility. Certainly, if we get a call through our hotline or concerns, we will ensure that, that the message gets to the people who, who are regulating those agencies. Okay. Blood, you know, blood, the blood supply is in, you know, is in short, is, is also, you know, we need people to donate blood. In Kent County, we do not have any locations where folks can go to donate. The closest locations are in Dover, Warren, and Salisbury at this point. And, I guess the, the last question is, where can the public find updates or answers to questions on an ongoing basis? You know, we encourage folks to use the, the state, county, and federal resources that are available on the webpage. Of course, you can call the Kent County Hotline, Monday to Friday, 410-778-1350 for specific answers or advice that you may be seeking.
So, a few other questions that have come up since the governor's order that didn't make it into our PowerPoint, that's in direction on last night, or what did they do, guidelines from the governor mean, and so we have some, some guidance yesterday. So, order does not prohibit people from going to the store to get groceries or prescriptions seeking medical attention or urgent care facility, getting cleaning or laundry supplies. Orders do not prevent people from going out to get necessities for pets or livestock. Order allows for travel to care for a family member or pet. Citizens are also permitted to travel for transporting family, friends, pets, or livestock for essential health and safety activities. Order allows for travel to and from educational institutions to receive meals and instructional materials for distance learning. Order allows for exercise activities done in accordance with social distancing guidelines. However, subject activities may not be done at a park that is closed by the state or local government. And finally, restaurants can be visited if obtaining food for carryout or drive-through only. That's some of the questions that we, 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 in the sheriff's office, had to deal with yesterday, or supposed to double yesterday, after the governor's order.
Mr. Webb, one question that, that I was even, I, it doesn't take much to confuse me, but I was confused about it too. Like, when you were speaking about the, I think you said you had 15 beds at the hospital?
Correct.
You're keeping the emergency rooms separate. That's not considered in that number?
Yes.
So, you have actually, whatever, 16 or 18, I guess, in the emergency?
Plus, plus the capacity of the emergency room. I don't have, I don't know what that number is, but the number that I'm citing are people who have been screened in the emergency department and have needed, you know, inpatient care.
Sure.
Those, yes.
But when someone first said it to me, I thought, well, it's got to be more than that, because I know, I mean, we've all been in the emergency room for, to see somebody or something, and they got, you got this chunk of beds that are here, but you're talking about like up on the second floor?
Correct.
You've got the...
Inpatient beds.
You said that what's, they've got 14 or 15?
Right now, they're licensed for 15.
15.
And they're, they're looking to... And they're, they're looking to expand to 26.
Now, what, what is involved in expanding it? I mean, do they have to put the necessary equipment in it? Do they have to get the okay from someone to expand that, do you think?
So, right now, usually what happens, and it's a very complicated, you know, bureaucratic process if you need to expand the number of beds, all of that has been put on hold. If, if individual hospitals need to expand, they have been given the permission to do that, to meet the need during the emergency period. So, there, there are three things. They need to have, you know, they need to have the space, they need to have the equipment, and they need to have the staffing to, to make that happen. And one of the, one of the things that, that the hospital system has been working is to get a waiver from the federal government related to the staffing standards that are required for specific beds. So, there are federal regulations that, that say, okay, if you're gonna have, you know, this number of beds, you need to have this number of nurses to cover that, those beds. And at this point, those regulations are, if, if we haven't gotten a waiver yet from them, they will be coming shortly so that, that they can have, they can have more beds with, with, with different staffing level requirements. So, they can have more beds, but have not as many staff to meet the need that they have. But, but that's, that's one of those regulatory requirements. It's called a, you know, a CMS 1135 waiver that is currently in process. If it, I'm not certain if it has actually been approved yet or not. That's, that's, that's just one of those topics that I haven't been able to follow.
So, basically, what you're saying, if they got the appropriate, as soon as they can get the appropriate equipment in these 11 other beds on the second floor, they could probably get them open in a reg, relatively short period of time.
Yes, and the staffing as well, so...
And the staffing. And then there is a third floor to that thing that was used once upon a time. I don't know, I, I guess my reason for saying this is you, you're, you're all aware of the discussion that's taken place in year, over the last few years about possibly losing our hospital, downsizing the size of the hospital. And, and I'm, I'm sure that this has changed that discussion around and, and has probably highlighted the importance that these rural hospitals, such as Ayers Play.
Absolutely.
And I think there will, just my feeling is that there will be a much different discussion because of this outbreak than what was taking place prior to the outbreak.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Commissioner, too, from our call with them yesterday, that we had with them, up for Shore, we were at Shore Regional Health yesterday. They've got some pretty innovative ideas to increase that surge also that they're working on, that they're not ready to announce yet, but they're working on some plans to handle the whole mid-shore region with some extra, that's awesome.
Very good.
So, in the best-case scenario, how many beds do you think we would have?
I would say, you know, you know, well, best-case scenario, we don't need more beds because nobody's getting sick.
Well, and that's not a proper word, I talked about that before I said, but I didn't know how else to say that. I mean, the worst-case scenario, how many beds could we actually have if we got the waivers and had to stay up? Everything else...
They're looking at, at, at ramping up to 26 beds in Chestertown with, you know, four, you know, four to six ICU beds.
Okay. They had a number yesterday for all the hospitals, up for Shore hospitals, but I can't remember what it was.
I, I don't remember, it was...
They're doing the same increase at all the rest of the hospitals.
They're, they're, they're looking to double the number of beds and quadruple the number of ICU beds that they have.
And I, I know President Mason mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, but you really, you really can't, you really can't say thank you enough to the people that are doing this.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, they're not only endangering themselves, that, on a daily basis, but then the possibility of taking it home to their families.
Our healthcare workers...
Quite a contribution on their part.
You know, our healthcare workers are, you know, are, are heroes, you know. I admire the work that they do, what they're, you know, the risks that they're taking is extraordinary, and the response that we have gotten is exemplary. So, you know, the next time you see a nurse out on the street, thank, thank that individual or a physician. You know, it's, it takes an entire team to make this happen.
Good question about it.
And it is, you know...
We've been doing, Commissioner, a weekly call with the EMS Council. It's all volunteer EMS Council, and they're still engaged, and they're still out there and they want to help. And we're trying to limit their exposure, and then we do a call also once a week with our Kent County EMS staff, our paid staff, and the same thing with them. They're all engaged, and they want to help, they want to work as much as they can, they want to get out there. That doesn't mean they're not scared, and especially ones that have children at home. They're, we're trying to figure out those precautions and make sure they're taking them, but they're all coming to work. And we also get calls in the emergency operations center almost daily of people wanting to know how they can volunteer, how they can help us. And we're able to point them to, mostly to the, to the feeding operations that are going on. We're really appreciative of them. Former county administrator, Proflit, showed up yesterday with a bunch of stuff for us to, just out of the blue, called me, said, wait, I got some stuff in my car for you, and this kind of stuff we're seeing. So, we were able to give some, some PPE to the detention center because of what he did. So, that's what's happening. It's happening everywhere.
If these were all single people, they wouldn't be half as scared as putting their family in jeopardy.
Yeah, when you go home every day, you don't know what's on your uniform, you know? So, we're trying to take those precautions, and it's tough, but they're doing it.
Yeah, I don't think we can express, it's really not worth to express how much we appreciate, I think, the people in Kent County, appreciate what you all are doing, you know, for, for the people. Like I say, I don't know how you can, you know, we can't really thank you alone. I have a good friend of mine whose daughter's a nurse, and, and he's an elderly person. He says she goes into the hospital, we're concerned that when she comes home, that is she safe? But we want her to go. So, it's, it's, it's those kind of attitudes that, I mean, our people have, and, and, I mean, I, I can say, I don't know how to express the extra effort and the work that both of you and your departments and everyone else has, has done for, for this family.
The true sad part is there's never like the end of the tunnel at the moment. You know, we're not done, and we don't know what the end game is at this point, so that's, that's the battle we have to keep fighting, is the morale and, and keeping the mission going. But I think, I know our staff's up to work.
Yeah, I can see where, the longer it goes on, you know, it's going to wear on people, and, and it's going, I mean, I mean, it's not, you know, it could get much worse, just the, just the way people can react, and they'll, they'll be wore out, I guess, is the problem.
And even, some of our local ambulance companies in, in the area have sent volunteers through FEMA up there to help New York out. Now, didn't we approve additional EMTs to be hired?
We did, we did, Commissioner, we processed, we've got four, identified four to look on, part-time for us to try and backfill. I think at this point, we're going to try and use them to limit the amount of volunteer exposure we have. It'll serve two things, it'll, it'll, it'll keep people from coming out as much, and then if something happens to our providers, to the county providers, then they're theirs to backfill. So, if, even if it's the flu, or somebody calls in with a fever or something, we don't have COVID-19, but we can't have them come to work. And they're gonna have to isolate themselves for two weeks. So, if we have that extra backfill from those temporary workers and then the volunteers after that, I think we'll be situated well for the next few weeks.
And just so the community knows, I think Shelley, you're on a phone call every morning with the state? Is that how it works?
No, this, in the morning, it's the EOC, which Wayne leads. And then twice a week, the governor's office has been hosting conversations.
So, our morning call, Commissioner, is emergency operations, emergency operations center call, where normally we would have everybody sitting in a room, and it'd be running 24 hours a day, but because of this, social distancing, the size of our room, and the need for everybody to do their other jobs, we've been doing it all virtual. So, we have that need that Bill is the head of in the morning, and we meet with Social Services, Commissioner's Office, Health Department, Local Management Board, the municipal leadership, we invited them to be a part of this, just so we can get the information out and in fire law and, and EMS involved also. So, we're having that call every morning to coordinate what happened the night before and what the activities are for the day.
Thank you.
Just one, one last thing I would like to, you know, I want to thank the citizens of Kent County for making the sacrifices that they are making currently. You know, there are many people who are not working because of the, the executive order, and I want to reassure, reassure the citizens of Kent County that what you're doing and the sacrificing, sacrifices that are being made are saving lives. You may not think that staying at home and not interacting is, does anything for the community. Really, in this situation, you're helping to slow the spread of this virus, and you are saving lives. And, you know, that is, that is very difficult for many people who, you know, who are facing economic hardship, and I recognize that, and I do want to thank you for making those sacrifices. Thanks.
And the more we stay home, the more resources we save from our hospitals.
Bill and I have done a lot of work last couple weeks on rumor control, so we want to encourage anybody that's got any questions, feel free to call. They can call my office and we'll do it, 410-778-7458, and we'll take care of that. We'd rather see you. I'm sorry, yes, so the, the Department of Social Services number that I gave out earlier was wrong, it's 410-810-7600, 410-810-7600. Thank you, Sol. So, again, for rumor control, rather than have it be out there, certainly our office...
Excuse me, Bill, can, can a member of the public ask the question?
We, at, at this point, we're not going to be opening this for, for public comment.
So, we want to encourage anybody that's got any questions, feel free to call. They can call my office, 410-778-7458, to make sure that we'd rather see you.
But there are no questions at this time that the positive...
No, not this time, we're not going to open it for public comment, ambulance updates. But if you have a question, if you have...
But they won't be there.
If you have a question, call the...
Here's our question for the Commissioner, that's a question for the code speakers.
I, I realize this, but if you have a question on COVID-19, you can call the Health Department or email, and, Mr. Webb, could you give that phone number and email again for anybody?
Yes, it's, it's, the phone number is 410-778-1350.
And is there an email?
You can email me at william.wed@marilyn.gov.
Okay, so at this time, that's the way we would like to handle that. You have a phone number or, and/or an email to, to contact them. Thank you, we appreciate it, say both of you and everything you've done, and I'm sure we'll have more updates.
It certainly sounds like you got a handle on what's going on, it was a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.